Call the meeting to order. I invite you to join me in the invocation.
Dear Lord, you have shown us to respect and love others in our actions and decisions. Let us follow your direction in leading our community in this time of change. Help us to realize the impact of our decision. Show us compassion for those less fortunate. As school comes to an end, Lord, we ask for your love and safety for our children and families this summer at home and in their travels. Protect our employees and keep them safe while doing their jobs. Lord, we trust in you and ask your blessings for all and us to thy service. Amen.
Amen.
First item on agenda is approval of minutes. Consider approval of the May 15th adjourned session, May 15th closed session, May 16th adjourned session, May 16th closed session, May 21st regular session, May 21st closed session, May 30 adjourned session, and May 30 closed session minutes.
Move approval?
Of all of them.
I got a correction.
My council member Hughes.
I think it was on the May 21st public hearing for budget, the second speaker. His name was, I believe, Jimmy Dunn. No, it's not. I can't find it right now.
May 21st?
Yeah, Lynn Honeycutt spoke.
Right.
And then the next one on Holt Road, I believe it was Jimmy Dunn.
Not Henry John?
Not Henry John.
Page two, page two then, first paragraph.
Okay.
Ms. Hughes, you adopt that with a correction?
Yes, sir.
For your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have several public hearings. The first is a public hearing for conditional use permit 1801. Nasser, are they here? I did not see them earlier.
He's here.
Okay, he's here. All right, we'll proceed then. I'll ask staff to come forward and introduce it to begin with.
Should we swear in everyone first or after?
How about you introduce it and then I'll swear everybody in for the who speaks.
Okay, so this is a conditional use permit 18-01. It takes off from the previous conditional use that was conditional use 17-006. One of the stipulations we have is that it executes, or it needs to be renewed every six months. Staff analysis real quick, not much has really changed at all from what was in the previous, in the previous conditional use. You know, a lot of the responses the applicant gave were pretty much the ones that were previously used. The only difference that we did notice was in one of the conditions specified for hours of operations, it says no person or entity engaged in electronic gaming operations defined here and shall engage in the business before 10:00 a.m. or after midnight Monday through Saturday, and shall not engage in business before 1:00 p.m. or after 12:00 midnight on Sundays. No playing on any computer subject to this chapter shall be allowed during the times when computer game establishments are required by this chapter or remain closed. So it looks like there was an EMS call there.
Hold on before you go into that.
Sure.
Just an introduction to begin with.
Okay.
All right, now, anyone who's going to care to speak for or against, I ask you to come forward and be sworn in. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give be the truth so help you God?
Yes.
All right. Nasser, you want to continue now?
Sure. Okay, so going back to that, there was a request I made, the date was a bit off, but I asked the EMS manager for some information on that, and he informed me that on February 9th, 2018, there was a call dispatched at 00:53 and it cleared over at 1:34. And our officer was here at the time too there because usually a police go whenever there's a medical emergency.
Sergeant, would you come forward and tell us what you observed that night?
On February 9th, 2018, at 12:54 a.m., we responded to this business for unconscious fainting. When I arrived, there was a female laying, still laying on the floor. It appeared that she was sitting at the fish table, I think is what they call it. And as I walked into business, there was a male to my right, and he was actively playing on the computer. And as we're taking care of the patient and doing what we need to do, someone walked over to him and he got off the computer. That's what I saw on that particular incident.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
At what time did that occur?
I arrived at 12:56 a.m., so.
And left at 1:30 a.m.? Is that what I heard?
I actually cleared at 1:12.
Okay.
The way that, did that come from the med?
Yeah.
The medics, they didn't clear until actually they dropped the patient off at the hospital and they're cleared from the ER.
So that patient was actually taken to the ER?
Yes.
Council, have any questions?
Can you tell us what the cause of the passing out was?
I do not know that.
The guy you didn't specify, you said that the EMS manager's response was if it gets to a certain point, just, you know.
Yeah. I guess that part's irrelevant. I think the time is the main part of this.
Right.
And in the interests of letting everyone know, we need to publicly state that every member of council up here got an email with complaints about this location. So we need that to be known also. Anyone have any more questions for the sergeant?
Not on this particular issue.
Just don't leave yet. If you'll step back over, have a seat. Okay.
That's pretty much all I have. If there's any questions, David is here to present his counterargument.
Okay. Before we go into finding the fact, council have any questions?
Is he gonna, are you gonna make any comments?
We've had a management change since all of this happened.
Tell us your name and address.
My name is David Chan. My address is 2000 U.S. Highway 52, Suite 2, Alamo, North Carolina 28001. I'd just like to say that we had a recent management change and that particular night, I think, I think.
Can you speak up, sir? We can't hear you. I can't hear you.
I think that particular night, they just had like, like in the chaos, like in the moment, but usually we're very on time with when we close.
So you're saying that this is not routine practice as council has been told?
No.
I noticed that you have a car up there today jacked up without any wheels on it behind, behind the business. What's with that?
That was, I have no explanation for that.
So that doesn't have anything to do with your business?
No. That has nothing to do with my business.
Is it on the property beside his business?
It's right near his, have his backboard.
Yeah, it's right beside, but I don't, I don't know.
Have you called anybody about it?
I don't know who to call.
The police?
Were you aware of it?
Yeah, I saw it there last week and I was hoping it would go away, but.
Go ahead, yes ma'am.
Not to ask him direct questions, I'd like to ask the chief before the chief leaves if he has some questions, but I'll get a call. He's on the phone. Can I ask the chief something?
Yes.
Does chief need to be sworn to answer a question?
Yeah, he does.
Will you, I'm sorry.
Left hand on the Bible, raise your right. You swear that testimony you're about to give be the truth so help you God?
And I hate to put you on the spot.
It's all right.
You're the chief, that's right. To your knowledge, have there been other incidences or calls after hours in the past six months up there?
No, ma'am.
That y'all have had?
Not that I'm aware of. Had my officers check up there periodically to see if they were operating after 12:00 and they haven't seen anything as they reported to me.
The issue of double parking, the issue of parking illegally, and those types of things, I know were an issue to begin with.
Right. And we haven't had anything in the last few months.
In the last few months?
Right.
Okay.
Council, have any further questions? Anyone else care to speak for or against before we close the public hearing?
The reason I didn't want to call anybody for that car, I didn't know who it belonged to. I didn't want to be responsible, like someone come back and like, hey, that's my car, why did you, you know? Like, I wasn't sure if it was.
When something like that happens, you need to let them know so they can investigate, see if it's stolen.
I do. I just, I mean.
It's kind of unique to be setting up on jacks behind your business.
I feel I've just got something.
Ms. Shaw?
Mr. Chan, on multiple occasions, I've ridden by the business and I've seen a black Chevrolet sedan parked in the fire lane. To your knowledge, is that any of your employees or any of your managers that drive up here?
He's a former employee.
Huh?
A former employee.
When, since when?
Since, as of three weeks ago.
Well, they were there this past Friday night parked in the fire lane?
He is no longer my employee and I was more than happy to make him move his car and tone.
Further questions, council? Okay, one last time, anyone else care to speak for or against? Hearing none, council, will be appropriate, close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Hall, second by council member Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on into the findings of fact. The first finding of fact. Now, Nasser, you have anything to say?
Oh, no, sorry, I'm just popping it up.
Okay. "The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed, and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided." You see the answers that he has provided. Do you, council, have any questions on that or comments?
Mayor, before we take a vote on all the findings of facts, just for clarification, if we find at least one finding of fact that we're not in total agreement on?
Then it fails.
That's.
They all have to be passed or it fails.
That's correct.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on the first one. Move to approve. Motion by council member Dry to approve finding of fact number one, second by council member Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, number one carries. Number two, "The use meets all required conditions and specifications." I'll entertain a motion unless council has questions.
I guess my question or my concern on this matter is the one incident which obviously somebody was on the machines after the predetermined hours, you know, but in listening to Mr. Chan or Chan, he's taken, taken care of that from a personnel standpoint. So I guess I'm concerned on how we approach this in the event that, say like if, if it's been taken care of, should we continue to move forward, like with another six month or 12 month conditional use permit review, you know?
I think with the, and it's totally up to council, I think with the volume of requests or comments you're getting, you probably want to do some kind of a time period. It's just up to you what you decide you want to do.
If in fact it passes.
Yeah.
And I agree. The issue is, is that we, at the time of this incident on February 9th, we had just given him his first six months. Okay, that was early in. And upon his own comments a few moments ago, he's had personnel changes, but those personnel changes supposedly just changed three weeks ago with possibly that same person there as recently as something that you saw 72 hours ago. Just comment.
Council, how do you want to proceed?
We did not approve it.
I'll second. I have a motion by council member Hall to not approve finding of fact number two, second by council member Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Six one. Finding of fact number three, "The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be public necessity." I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by council member Townsend to approve finding of fact number three.
Second.
Second by council member Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Raise your hands, please. A no.
No.
Four three. Finding of fact number four, "The proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics."
Move to not approve.
Second. Motion by council member Hall, second by council member Dry, to not approve finding of fact number four, further discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Finding of fact number five, "Be in general conformance with the adopted plans." Move not to approve. Motion by council member Dry to not approve finding of fact number five.
Second.
Second by council member Hall, further discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Council, you have now denied three of the find, findings of fact. I think it would be appropriate now to have a motion to deny the conditional use.
Move approval to deny conditional use permit 1801.
Motion by council member Hall.
Second.
Second by council member Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Robinson or Nasser, who's going to do this? What's the, what's their date of their current conditional use?
Current conditional use is probably on the verge of expiration if it hasn't expired already. So after this point, once it expires, there's some things Mr. Chan can do on his side, but otherwise it would have to shut down or it would lead to a zoning violation, then I'd have to pursue it per Chapter 10, our ordinances for enforcement procedures.
Correct.
So is there a way in something that we have here?
There's a letter.
Here is a letter, and I think we can find it.
Says November 20th.
That's right.
At public hearing held on November 20th. Well, it. Yeah, it counts, it counts, the date counts when it's being filed. So it doesn't count when the approval's given, so it was, it was filed a little later on, more in December. So, and then it was actually recorded at the register of deeds in January, but the time starts when you actually file it with the, with the clerk of city council. That's when the time starts ticking.
You don't know that exact date right now?
Well, I see where it was, where it was, the notary signed it on January 8th, but I do not see a note. I'm still looking at, on stuff that's been attached, hold on.
Okay. If you want to go with the safe bet, you can go with January 8th, so.
If January 8th would be, that's the date.
July 8th.
Yeah, July 8th would be.
So if you want to go with the safe bet, it'd be July 8th, and that would also give Mr. Chan time to deal with his affairs.
Since that's the date that it's recorded with the, with the register of deeds, I think that would be the appropriate date to proceed with.
Move this be effective. Do you want that in a motion?
Actually, I think you've done it with the motion before. I just wanted Mr. Chan to know the last date that he can be in operation will be July the 8th.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Chan, you need to make arrangements to close as of July the 8th. Next is public hearing for conditional use permit 1802 and is, who's going to be the spokesman for this? I'm going to, let's get all of you up here at one time.
Spokesman, yes, spokesman.
Who's our speaker?
Well, if I'm going to have any questions, let's get all of you up here, just swear
all of you in. Anyone else care to speak for or against the Pfeiffer University conditional use permit? You swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give be truth so help you God? Council, if you remember, we did this under the city's name before because we actually owned the property. Now it is owned by Pfeiffer, so we will have to proceed with a conditional use permit for Pfeiffer. Nasser, you have anything you want to say?
I really got nothing to add. This is very similar to the previous application. Nothing's really significantly changed. The only reason they actually came here is if you guys remember the rewriting we did of the conditional use permit process in 2017, the text amendment, I put in that it should expire within a year's time, or if they haven't pulled the permit, or if there's been any change within 30 days, or if the discontinuation of 180. So in this case, the permit has, it will expire in June 15th, so the end of this week, so you might as well just come and get another conditional use. I know in this, in this case, it seems like a pain, but I think in other cases, especially given previous record keeping, I think the one-year expiration is pretty good. Also, it's, this is a pretty rare, everybody we've given conditional use permits so far have pulled the trigger within relatively quick period of time, so.
Who wants to speak?
Tom's been so involved in the development. Good evening.
For the public record, tell us what it is and everything so we have it on record.
And names, and names.
Yes, and introduce yourself, please.
I am Colleen Keith. I'm the president at Pfeiffer University. Tom Earnhardt, who is helping us develop and also a faculty member now at Pfeiffer in the physician assisting program. And we have Sharon Bard, who is our director of facilities. So Sharon will be very involved in the, in the building of the facility. We are in the process of pursuing a USDA loan and we received an email today from the State Historic Preservation Society saying they're working on our letter today and we'll have it this week, and that is the last piece that has to go into the USDA application. So we should be in pretty good shape this week. We are planning to build a four-story facility on the property at 245 West Main and house our graduate program in physician assisting studies and educational therapy there. And our goal is to have the programs up and running in 2020, and so we need to extend this permit so that we can then, when we get our USDA ask approved, then we can start the, the process of actually breaking ground. So hopefully that will happen very soon. What am I missing?
So really, nothing has changed. The plan is still exactly as was presented a year ago. We're still working through, we've been tweaking with the architects, getting things dialed in the way they should be. My, our senior leadership, Sharon and others, have been working extensively to get this application and of course, if you've ever gone through that process, you know, it's a painful endeavor, but they're, I think they're going to persevere and they'll be fine. So that's, again, nothing has changed and the application is exactly, very, very close to the same as it was last year. We would ask that you extend this, grant this extension and we should be back on track.
Very good. Council, have any questions?
We're waiting with bated breath. Sorry.
Any comments, questions? Anyone else care to speak for or against the conditional use permit? Hearing none, it be ordered to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by council member Hall.
Second.
Second by council member Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we need to go through the findings of facts. Number one, "The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed, and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by council member Hall, second by council member Whitley, to approve, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, "The use meets all required conditions and specifications."
Move approval.
Second. Motion by council member Hughes, second by council member Hall, to approve, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, "The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity."
Move to approve.
Motion by council member Aldridge.
Second.
Second by council member Hall, to approve, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, "The proposed use is in harmony with the adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics."
Move approve.
Motion by council member Hall.
Second.
Second, council member Whitley, to approve, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five, "Be in general conformance with the adopted plans."
Motion approved.
Motion by council member Whitley.
Second.
Second by council member Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Council, all of the findings of fact have been approved. It would now be.
I want that motion.
Take it, go for it.
We were waiting.
That's right, we've been waiting.
It would be appropriate to approve conditional use permit 1802.
I move that.
Second. Motion by council member Bramlett.
Second.
Second by council member Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Moment of personal privilege, ma'am.
Yes, please.
So Sharon, you are the hero, as I understand it, on Saturday.
Yes.
By North Stanley's graduation, you are the hero, as I understand it.
Well, Duke Calhoun.
Well, I know, but you are the one that they say were the hero through that process.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Yes, 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 yes.
That's right. And we don't want to be in here, we're going to be down the street.
And back to your scissors. Thank you, I know it.
Number five, economic development public hearing for Carolina Tree Top LLC project. Mark, where are you? Come on forward, please, and bring anybody else that's going to speak for or against. Do you need them sworn in for this project or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then just have them, have them right there, be fine.
Right, yeah. Mayor, council, Mr. Ferris, pleased to represent to you, for you tonight, information about the Carolina Tree Top Challenge. First, I'd like to just recognize a few people that have helped with this process. Chris Lambert, wanted to recognize him. He was the one that brought the project to us. And Alicia Heron has worked with this effort to make sure that we had good financial information. Of course, the, our owners of it have also provided a lot of good information as well. And also Lisa Kaiser, with our Parks and Recreation Director, she's been very helpful in making this process work well. And of course, Michael Ferris has always been a lot of help in things I do. And Mike Leonis, he helped a lot with making sure that a lot of the utilities and stuff were available and gave me a lot of good information about that. Ryan Henson was with our water resources, helped quite a bit with identifying things, issues that we could work together on, and he was very helpful. And of course, the mayor is always very helpful in things that I'm working on. What I'd like to do is introduce, well, first of all, I mean, the, the purpose of this is we are in the process of doing this, we'll be designating this property as an, for an economic development use. And that's under North Carolina General Statute 158 7.1. And while we may not be, we won't be doing this tonight, we will be also approving a contract, which will be, well, will be presented later. And then, of course, we, at that point, we will also approve this resolution. But what I'd like to do is introduce some very important people that have been very active in this process. First is Ken White. He's the operating manager for, for the facility, and he's been working diligently with me on this project. And his fiancee, Laura Piper Hall, she will be the, handle the marketing for the operation. Bill White, who can't be here tonight, is Ken's father, and he's really the, he'll be the president. He's the person that's been behind this, pushing it and has been. the president, he's the person that's been behind this, pushing it, and has built a lifetime of, of equity and a great family to bring this whole thing forward. And Bill White, Ken's brother, is the attorney in the family that's been helping us with this as well. And so what I'd like to do, Ken is going to do a presentation for you, I think he'll do a good job kind of explaining how this, the Tree Top Challenge works. Ken?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Ferris, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I can't reiterate enough what Mark had said about the help we have received from the city. They have been an outstanding group to work with. Mark, Alicia, Chris, Lisa, everyone has been outstanding. The purpose that I would like to, to go over tonight is, a lot of times when we talk about what we're trying to do, and what we want to develop, a lot of questions come up, first about safety, and second about what the effect of what we're trying to do, the impact environmentally on the property we're using. So I have a short video that was allowed to use by Mr. Dave Johnson, is a gentleman that we are working very closely with, and he was in the Adirondacks of New York. And that's where I first got associated with this whole project, actually going through the course that he had built. He has been down to, he's visited Almaral, he's visited the park, he has did an initial screening of the trees, the property, and said it would be an outstanding place to build a park in proximity to the market we're trying to establish outside of Charlotte, outside Greensboro, Winston-Salem. And when I went along and said that the, and told him about the, the, the help that we're getting from the city, he said, you're in the right place. So I would like to show this video, and hopefully it will ease some people's concerns maybe about safety and, and the impact, environment's impact on the park. And so that, for those that don't know what we're trying to do, and maybe this will, this will be able to, you'll be able to see what we're trying to accomplish here. It would be beneficial to the city, it'd be beneficial to us as a company, and I just hope that we can get things worked out where it will be a long and prosperous relationship between Carolina Tree Top Challenge and the city. So, if we could play that video for me?
Has it got audio?
Yeah, it does.
It does have audio.
Gets it figured out, we'll start it over.
Okay. But you can see what's happening, I mean, the action that's going on is people using the ropes course and the adventure course, so.
Where's that sledgehammer?
You're going to dance.
She said if something goes wrong, she's there.
Can I ask a question while he's doing this?
Martha Sill will join you.
I'll dance, I mean, I can dance.
I'll step over there, you both can dance.
So, so while he's doing this, I'm just going to throw this out there. What drew you to Almaral?
I'm sorry?
What brought you to Almaral?
We, we, Laura and I looked a lot of places, all over the...
Outplay Adventures is North America's leading builder of Trigo branded aerial adventure parks. Aerial adventure parks, the latest craze in eco-tourism, outdoor adventure, are a series of games, courses, set in nature amongst trees. They include zip lines, wobbly bridges, Tarzan jumps, swings, all kinds of crazy stuff that are dressed up in the trees. Trigo parks are recognized worldwide as the leader in design and innovation. Over thirty-five parks located throughout Europe, Canada, and the United States carry the Trigo branded banner. We have seven parks in the United States, including the park where we stand today, Adirondack Extreme Adventure Course in Bulletin Landing. This was the first park built of its kind in the United States, and it went up from Memorial Day Weekend two thousand and seven. We also have parks located in Flagstaff, Arizona, Bradenton, Florida, we have two in Pennsylvania, New Hampshire, and we have four parks designed, ready to go. Trigo's standards are much higher than we see from our competitors. During our builds, we work hand in hand with Mother Nature. We don't use spikes when we climb trees, nothing pierces our trees, use a compression system for our platforms. When we leave a site, we leave a much healthier site than when we arrive, and that sets us apart from all our competitors. Our goal, when we do get on site, is to have our design disappear within the canopy of the trees, to give our guests the excitement that they're looking for at a Trigo aerial adventure park. The Trigo design process starts with an initial site visit whereby we walk potential clients' sites, ensure that you've got five to seven acres of land properly forested. We follow that with an onsite design phase, which normally takes four days, finally bringing in an arborist to inspect each and every tree that has been selected. Following that, we have our build team on site for normally two to three months. During that phase, we also bring on our staff, training people, who come on and train all the guide staff, inside Welcome Center staff, so we can deliver a turnkey operation to our prospective clients within a three to three and a half month process. We offer all our prospective partners the opportunity, prior to them opening their own aerial adventure park, to come and experience Adirondack Extreme, work in our Welcome Center, work with our guide staff, become comfortable in the process. We take training and safety very, very seriously. Our staff will train your selected guide staff for a total of four days, classroom, on course. At the end of the four-day session, each and every guide will go through an exam, and must achieve a very high mark in order to be certified as a Trigo guide. Outplay Adventures is known for its after-sales service. Talk to any one of our park owners, and they will testify that any issue, no matter how small or how large, Outplay Adventures will be there to back you up, to ensure that your Trigo park is safe and operational as quickly as possible. Since two thousand and ten, eco-adventure tourism has grown dramatically. People are looking for that outdoor excitement, that outdoor experience, and this has translated into a boom in aerial adventure parks popping up all over the country. The consumer for aerial adventure parks is a wide, wide demographic. We see children as young as seven, and adults as old as eighty-seven coming to our parks. We've seen tremendous growth in the aerial adventure park industry through ski hills. Ski hills looking for the summer revenue that right now disappears as they close their hills down after the ski season. One of the great advantages that Outplay Adventures brings to all our potential clients is we are not only park builders, we are park owners. We've operated Adirondack Extreme Adventure Course since Memorial Day Weekend of two thousand and seven. Since two thousand and seven, we've developed the best, safest, and most profitable formula for the operation of aerial adventure parks.
So that is, gives you some idea of what we're, we would like to do here at Rock Creek Park. And another question is, what drove, yeah, I think it was by accident, to be honest with you, we were driving out looking for land, and we went, Laura and I went and walked on the greenway that's down there. And as we were walking, and were taking a break, we looked over and said, wow, that's some pretty nice land right there, exactly what we're trying to look for. And then, we made a couple phone calls, and got in touch with Mark, and just things started going from there. But other than that, we realized as we drove through town, it's a beautiful little town, you know, it's a beautiful little city, that, that we would like to, you know, help in the next ten, fifteen years, whatever it may be, you know, draw some, you know, economic value to it, and bring some people, some visitors in. And it just, it, it just felt right, you know, it, it wasn't a big city, it was, it was, it's not anything like Charlotte or Winston-Salem or anything like that, but it's, you know, it's accessible. We thought it would be a good, a good place where people would want to visit on a weekend, or, you know, in proximity to the Mount Mauro, and you're already National Forest, and, you know, we looked at it from a business standpoint, of course, but we also looked at it as what we could give back, and what maybe could be beneficial for the city as well to get into, to get into, allowing us to lease some of that land.
I think also it's important to say that when we were looking at where to place a business like that, we took into consideration where businesses already similar to this already are planted, and we wanted to avoid being in direct competition with those businesses. But we wanted to be near an area where we could draw from major cities. So we had Charlotte, Winston-Salem, Greensboro, and this lined up with that, this sort of wedge that we had identified, a beautiful North Carolina forest area that has recreation and has a market for recreation, where people want to get out, and they want to climb, and they want to do outdoor activities, and there's families and business owners that want to do family activities. But we needed it to be close enough that it was travel, you could travel in one day. And this was just, it, it all lined up, and then when we saw this town, and we visited it, and we went for a walk in that park, and we saw the park already there, and the tower was there, it just was like kismet, it, it's, it's the perfect place.
Your mention of Mauro Mountain.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the people are here anyway. It was once said that Almaral was in the middle of nowhere, right in the middle of everywhere.
Mm-hmm. That's very, very true. That, that is absolutely true. And because you have that popular link of people already looking to find recreation in this, in this town, it, it also added to what we believe to be a successful place to put it, because people are already coming here for something, they're going to be familiar with it. And then we'll be able to build market to bring them to the city as well, to build that and to bring that, that economic value to the city, so.
I was interested to see that they had all those up north, because I was worried about weather. And apparently, that must be a drawing card to have them in colder weather.
Yeah, they, I don't, Dave runs his park. Soft opening in March, and then he'll go through probably October, but mid-October, he's probably shut down, you know.
But we won't have to do that here.
You know, and, and that's what we're trying to do, like, we could theoretically think about, even on weekends during the winter, you know, we've, we've tried to work out a system where we're flexible enough with, with the guidelines that the city has given us in, in the lease, and, you know, if we see a sixty-degree day in December, you know, a weekend that's coming up, we'll open. And again, that's just attractive, you know, brings people here, and, you know, Laura's experienced in, in doing a lot of that stuff, and the, the use of all the technology, social media now, you know, we've already started on some of that stuff. But yeah, there's a lot, the one, you know, it's weird, because the place I visited in Florida is opposite, it's like, it's, they open year-round, but their slow time is now, because it's just so hot, yeah, so. You know, and we got a, we've gotten a lot of guidance from all, the place, the, the operation of Flagstaff, Adirondack Mountains, and the place in Florida is, has been fantastic in sharing information, projects, whatever it may be, they, they, everyone's working together, you know, and, and that makes it feel a lot, a lot easier when you're going into something like this.
I had a couple questions, first of all, and if, and if it was announced, I apologize for missing it. How long has the, has the company been in business?
Adirondack Park, they started their park in two thousand and seven. Trigo, who they associate with does the actual building, is actually a French company. They've been, I think, since two thousand and one, I could be wrong, but they've built more parks in Europe and Canada than they have the United States. Like, we saw that thirty, they've done thirty-five parks, but most, the majority of those are in Europe and, and Canada.
Okay.
Have you asked about his company, is that what you're asking?
No, about the, about the parent, about the, the one who watched the video on, that's what I was asking about.
Yeah, Adirondack Park, I did it, I think, in two thousand and ten, that's where I was going to do this, but he said, yeah, it was two thousand and ten, it was the first time I did it, but I think he said he's been in business since two thousand and seven.
And if you were to move forward at Rock Creek Park, how often is the equipment, how often is it inspected? Because we have to make sure that, that it's safe and reliable. So who, who, who holds you accountable to make sure that our residents and visitors are safe?
Right. We are members of the Association for Challenge Course Technology. They come in, Trigo will come in the first year and do the, do the first, the inspections over the first year. So before we're opening every six months, but they're also going to have to train, will train myself and a selected few to do the daily training of the inspections of the course before we even open the doors. Now after that, I'm going to have to go to a higher level of training through ACCA, the Challenge Course Technology Association, to get even a higher level where we don't have to bring in Trigo or Outplay Adventures to do our inspections. I will be able to do that. I just have to have so many hours built up as a, as a park operator before they'll, you know, they'll do that. So the initial training will be here and up in the Adirondacks for myself and selected guides, and then after that, we, we're going to, that, while, that year while they're training us, Adirondack will come in, and they'll do, Trigo will come in and do all the inspections, you know, that first year. You know, some things have to be checked daily, some things every three months, some things every six months. So that's how that progression starts, and then after that first year, it'll be mainly made, but, you know, like they said, their aftermarket, you know, help, you know, if, you know, they'll help us, all we need to make sure that the course is safe.
Safety is a very, very important part of this business generally, because we, we don't want people getting hurt.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's to our benefit to make sure that we are keeping those, those courses inspected daily.
Well, and to your point, we as a city, we have to make sure that if, if a resident or a visitor or a citizen, whoever it may be, if they pull into Rock Creek Park, whether it's to swim, play tennis, or to slide through the trees, we got to make sure that we're doing all we can to protect them.
Well, and like any business that you guys are going to have come to your city, you're, you're going to want a trampoline business, you know, we have jumping facilities down in South Charlotte, Whitewater Park, Recreation Park over on the, on the west side. Any, any business that you have coming, I'm sure that that's going to be something that you want to make sure that every, that the safety standards are being followed. So, we fully expect that.
Is there some additional inspection of the trees themselves?
Arbors, is that...
An arborist or someone, do they come in regularly? I mean, a hollow tree sometimes hard to detect.
That, I don't know. I would think that my, from what, from my understanding, talking to Mr. Johnson, they, they don't, if there's even a question about a tree, you know, being quest, you know, like, not being able to support what they're trying to do, they won't use it.
And that is done with professionals in the department, it's not just people glancing out and saying, oh, looks like...
Yeah, I didn't know if there was some re-inspection of those periodically to actually check trees themselves.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
How many employees will you have, or training folks?
Twelve to fifteen. With the way it's set up is, is, there's a certain amount of guides that are trained to go up and get people that have to, of course you have your Welcome Center crew, and then you have your guide crew. So your Welcome Center crew could be four to six, and then after that, you have twelve to fifteen guides that are actually out on the course, watching, that makes sure people are following the guidelines, being safe. And those are the, so on a busy day, you know, we'll have fifteen to twenty people out there.
Are they hired locally, or?
That's our, that's our intention, to hire locally.
And the Welcome Center, would that be a facade, or how, how would that be in conjunction with the surroundings of Rock Creek Park?
The building's already there, it's one of the buildings from the parks of Recreation.
Okay, all right, I'm with you there.
And that, the building's perfect. I mean, so that's, again, it, it just fed into, you know, orientation, Welcome Center, stuff like that.
They're going to remodel what used to be our storage and maintenance facility there, down there when the parks were there, Recreation Staff was there. Mr. Aldrich?
Yes, sir, two questions real quick. So Carolina Tree Top, that will be your, your first tree park?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And where's the next local, or where's the next nearest facility like this in the area? Do you know?
Whitewater Center has encompassed in that whole thing, they have a, they have a couple courses that, that you can do once you're inside the center. So you can do, they have bike trails, they have running trails, they have everything, and you can pay a little extra money to do one of those courses that is very similar to ours. There's also one in the Science Center in, I forget what city. There's also one in the Science Center in, I forget what city.
You know one there, Fayetteville, somewhere close to Fayetteville?
Greensboro.
Yeah, and there's one, of course, up in the Tunbridge Mountains.
Asheville, Asheville, Denver.
A big one up there.
Nashville just opened one too. But no, this, and though, what's different from what we're trying to do and what they're doing, that, that you, once you're in the doors, it's like in addition to what you're primarily going for. Like, the Science Center, you're going there to visit science, to look at science stuff. Oh, and by the way, you can do this course if you want to pay an extra, you know, 15, 20, $25. Same thing with the Whitewater Center. This will be just, all we're doing is focused on, you know, this Tree Top Challenge. That's all we're going to do. We have five to six courses planned, so it's not just one or two. So there's more value where people, once you pay your entry fee and go through your orientation, you can climb, you can go through as many as you want, as long as you can meet the requirements for the last couple of courses, which require a certain height restriction. You have to be able to lift your own weight. You have to be able to reach a certain distance because they progressively get harder as you go through.
So you pay a price and you go through all of them, or is there a time limit?
Yeah, a time limit.
You just go through everything one time?
Yeah, exactly. Think of it as.
An adventure.
I'm a director of operations of a golf course. So think of it as getting a tee time. So you start at eight o'clock. Most times it takes two to three hours to get through. The courses are color-coded, just similar to ski areas where you're, you've got your green, your blue, and your black diamond. So you have to progressively go through each one and before we will let you on the next one that you get to. By the time you get to that last one, it's a physical challenge. It's not, I don't want to, this is not, think of it as getting some kind of benefit and satisfaction of hiking the top of Mount Mitchell. You know, if you get done with it, you accomplish something, there's that sense that you did something, makes you want to come back. If you don't get through them all, I want to come back to make sure I complete that course. So there's, that's the return factor of it. So it's challenging.
And there's also the aspect of team building that uses part of the facility for businesses that want to do team building, create games and challenges that might not take all of the coursework, but will be off to the side using the coursework.
And we hope, in conjunction with you, we'll both be a drawing card. I mean, you're going to be advertising for that, but when we have tennis courts, swimming pools, ball fields, hopefully it'll be back and forth.
And I would like to see them leave our park and come downtown, walk around.
Exactly. And hopefully, you heard Pfeiffer talking earlier, you're getting ready to see a lot more students downtown. So maybe they'll be someone that wants to use your course regularly, maybe.
And we really would love to do something that's like a combination of a swim challenge, bike challenge, run challenge, climb challenge, as kind of a yearly activity that we're able to maybe do a fundraiser type.
I think you could, that would be lovely to have, with some of the events they have now.
Yeah.
So I'm sure you could get in touch with our local.
I know that there's some greenway building that's going on in Alvaro, we've been to that much, getting those greenways active. And so we'd love to do something there as well because it's right on one of the courses.
Sure.
When you get to those more challenging parts of the course, are you wearing a safety harness or?
Yeah.
Okay. I was trying to see in the video.
Right, you're never.
Unfortunately.
And the technology for being hooked in now has come, when I did it, okay, you had two carabiners which you hooked in. And I just remember, I didn't make it through the second time, by the way. I had to get pulled down. It was very embarrassing. But they, the guides down on the bottom, they're watching you, you have to be double-clipped is what they call it, at all times. And I remember one time I was just moving around a tree and I was unclipped both of them and he yelled right up and that, you get one warning. And if you get, if you get warned again, they take you down. Now, nowadays, they have a double-clipped system where it's almost impossible to be on, double-unclipped, so to speak. There's cables through the carabiners that are hooked up to the wire. You have to manipulate it so in a way that you'd have, it's almost impossible.
You'd have to cut it in order for you to be double-unhooked.
So they're just constantly, and that's the ACCT, that's the, you know, the Challenge Course Technology Group, that is constantly, you know, updating ways to make it as safe as possible. It really has a pretty, accidents are rare, let's just say that. It's got a pretty high rate of, or a pretty low rate, I should say, of injuries. Zip lines more than what we're doing. And even those are rare. So, you know, safety is absolutely the number one priority. You know, there's procedures and protocol in place for weather. You know, so, and again, we're just trying to cover all our bases as far as that is concerned.
One last thing. Some of y'all may be more aware than I. I've been involved with Boy Scouts for about 25 years. But we have Camp Barnhart up in the New London Baden area. And I remember years ago, Chuck Moorhead, who was our Parks and Recreation Director, actually helped build a course up there. Some of the things I remember when I was a teenager.
That one 25 years ago.
Well, that was 50 years ago. But I've been involved with the Boy Scouts on their board since then. However, is, have you looked at that as another resource to?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Very good.
Because they're very active.
Scout days would be awesome, and the Girl Scout cheerleaders, so.
Okay, great. That was very important to hear you say that.
You know, the campgrounds, the church groups, I mean, we're ready to, you know, hit them all as much as we can.
My nephew is an Eagle Scout, he just got his Eagle.
Congratulations.
And thank you.
Yeah.
And so using scouts for some of the employees of the facility is one of the first, that and college students that are new, or, I mean, that's perfect for employees. They can do the ones that we don't have to certify. There will be employees that have to be certified or certified.
Two follow-up comments and then two questions. So there is a small one of these on scale at the North Carolina Zoo in Ashboro, a very small one, because I was just at the zoo two months ago. And there's a little one, okay? But it's just basically for little people. Okay, so it's very small. I did go through the ropes course, the one in the mountains of North Carolina about six years ago, okay? And don't worry, I was definitely doubled. I mean, I would definitely have more than two carabiners on me. Personally, I really had a problem with this the first time I heard about it. I don't mind leaving it out there. Because of the liability to the city, that this is city-owned property. Folks, look at it as city-owned property, okay? For the benefit of people here and listening and watching and reading, because the newspaper's here and the radio is here, okay? Give us a snippet of the benefits that you all can already see are going to bring, it will bring to Alvaro, okay? The drawing card, the people coming in, just give us something else because I want it to be that these folks can report on it tomorrow because they're going to do that, okay? So give that to us.
There is, we plan to give a certain percentage of our gross revenues yearly back to the city of Alvaro.
Right.
For use at Rock Creek Park or, you know, whatever, whatever your discretion. We also plan to employ as many, up to 20 people, you know, young, whoever it may be, young adults, anybody who's interested in being, you know, that wants to work there. So we are, we are trying to employ people from Alvaro. I see it as a major, I wouldn't say major, let's just say, what I would like to see happen is, they come here to do this. They discover Alvaro. They walk downtown to Alvaro. Restaurants, the beautiful parks you have here, just know that you're here.
Right.
Okay? And I want them to come back. The more we can have them come back to our place, the more I would like them to see, come back and visit the city of Alvaro and the county in general. That's what I see happening. That's what I want to occur and that's what my dad's dream is. And again, it's, the potential we see from the areas that we want to put this park, Rock Creek Park, and the potential that we saw when we first visited the city, that's what we're trying to do. And that's what we're looking to do. And by allowing us to lease that land, we want to give something back. And that's where that goes, you know, some of the percentage off the, how much we make, we give them back to the city to use. That's part of the plan.
And this is your first endeavor of this kind?
Correct.
Yours. Even though there's ones out there that we're going to copy, this is your first business adventure like this.
Right.
Okay.
It is.
And on a personal level, for me, one of the things that really excites me about bringing this business to Alvaro is, is being able to do those events that bring people and families out. I'm big on, I'm a marketing person and I work right now for On the Border and I love doing events. That's what I really think is so awesome about this outdoor activity because you're getting families out, you're getting kids off their computers, you're getting them outside, something that's really fun and is a huge draw for families to be able to do together. So for me, those events that we can put together to do some fundraisers in fun ways, clever ways, and to bring families out.
Counsel, have any further questions?
Kids, what's the cost to participate, as far as you can get?
Right, all our business plans have the cost of $46 for the adults. Kids would be 25. And there's a kids' course, I'd like to put two in myself, but right now the plan is for one kids' course, but they can go through as many times as they want. And again, we try to make that just at the level where it needs to be, you know, where it keeps them entertained and challenged as well. So that's, that's what our, that's what our plan is for right now.
Do you have any thoughts about like special days or special weekends for children, say like a discounted price?
Yeah, I mean, we're, again, we're, she's.
Yeah, we're a small, we're a small town. And there's, I know there's a lot of kids that would enjoy this. I just want anyone that wants to, to be able to go out and enjoy what we're putting together here as a team.
The two parks that I, the park I went to and the two I visited had a pretty substantial children's course that incorporated a lot of the elements you saw in the video. It's just on it lower to the ground, you know, and just make, from where you stand up to where you're hooking is just lower. So it's, everything's just miniature. And then they also had a separate zip line for the kids. So the two courses I visited, you ended with a pretty long zip line to end. We did the same, they did the same thing with the kids' course. Now, I would like to see making our first course that's also adults, but almost to the point where some of those kids that are maybe, we know, we look at them and, you know, and they're doing really well on that one. My son, when he did the kid one, he whipped through it like 15 times by the time we were done with the big one. But he probably could have handled the next level. Of course, once you get going up, you know, it's just, it's not a good idea to put them on anything level maybe than the first two. But we have already talked about that, you know, open it up to special days, you know, scout day, Bible camp day, you know, just, the sky's the limit, actually.
The Special Olympics actually would be awesome to me. I would love to do something with the Special Olympics.
And that, there's direction on some of the courses being built there to try to utilize and make it handicap accessible to, for some point, you know, to allow them to use it as well. And that's, again, that's the other thing that's drawn us to, that the potential of growth is there. And to do things that we'd like to do as far as bringing groups in and, again, bringing people here. The ideas that she has, sometimes I get them, I'm like, no way. But then when, the more you think of them and the more willing she's to work on it and put them into practice, she's got a lot of good ideas. And I think that, again, it's a potential that I think is there and it's worth it. So we wouldn't be involved if we didn't think it was, and we wouldn't be taking the risk that we're taking as well, you know, to try to make this work.
Well, our Parks and Rec does a couple of programs during the summer, a challenge program that could be expanded to include something like that. I would love to see us do something for smaller kids that could, we may have to get out and help find some sponsorship money or something for some of this. But I think we've got some kids that couldn't necessarily afford it, but maybe we could offer it to them.
Absolutely. You know, absolutely. One time I visited a park, there was, there was something going on with the logs across the creek down there. And I saw the rappelling thing was there and I think, so they've had, they're in the middle of doing stuff and they've had stuff before. Absolutely. We are all for, you know, all for doing, expanding any of those programs you might have.
Counsel, have any more questions?
But you piqued my enthusiasm.
Anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against. Hearing, and Counsel, I'll need to entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing until 6:00 PM on Monday, June the 25th.
Move to approve moving the public hearing to June the 25th at 6:00 PM.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion?
Does that mean that we are going to have another meeting that night?
Yes. Reason we're going to have to do that, the agreement is not ready yet and we will need to approve that agreement before waiting to July. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I want to do something a little bit different. Would it be, I'd like to shake your hand.
No problem.
Thank you for what you had to say about the city and working with us to get.
She rescued you.
And your challenge, your challenge is to get him on the zip line.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll be there. Thank you very much.
As long as I got.
Thank you, appreciate it.
It'll take four carabiners, but I'll get it.
Till you see it. You'll be comfortable with it too. We'll see how it works.
Counsel, I have one agenda adjustment. We need to add a permit request for a special event at the end of the meeting.
There's a approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under announced allegations, number six, Mr. Lance Howell. He is here to request a reimbursement of water charges due to an excessive water usage leak.
It's not going to be as much fun as the last one. I've had the property at 1910 West Main Street since 2011 and.
I must not be able to hear. Can you, will you speak into that better? Thank you, Lance, because I can't hear.
All right. I've owned the property at 1910 West Main Street since 2011 and my average utility bill has been the minimum $65 with zero cubic feet of water used a day. And back in April, it came up to be almost 10,000 cubic feet of water. There was no leaks found, no, the only thing I have there is a bathroom and some outside, some outside faucets, but there was no water running. I did speak with Scott Hopkins at the, with the city and he said that he saw where they had gone back and checked, the meter was not running, there was nothing, nothing found, no water leaking anywhere. I was not aware of it until I got the bill. But when I went down there and checked, I couldn't find anything. And when I called him and talked with him about it, he said, well, you have to, you have to show some type of repairs or something that you've done to qualify for some type of adjustment. I said, but all I've got is a, all I've got is a bathroom. I've got a toilet and a sink. I went and checked everything and I could force the toilet to stay open and run, but I never found it that way. If it did that, it had to do it and correct itself before I was there. I'm only there, you know, maybe a time or two a week. It's not open for business. So I really, I found no evidence of any leaks, but I did replace everything in the toilet. All the valves and all were fine, there's no leaks at all. And I received a bill since then and it's back to zero usage.
Okay, so may I ask?
Sure.
So whoa, 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 whoa. So we have in front of us, to be completely transparent, we have in front of us your, back a year, your electric and water.
Right.
With the last date on here of 5/18. At that time, there was 98/8. So have you gotten something since then?
Yes.
May I see that, please?
Yes.
That would be interesting to see. And guys, for my rest of counsel, it was dated 6/18. Electric was one, average use is zero, water use is zero, water cubic use is zero and water average is zero. So it's just like down there in 12/17, basically. Same thing it looks like for, thank you, for December.
Could anyone have gone down and cut the water on and cut it off and cut it on?
That could have been done from the outside. There was no evidence of it, there was no, and it even stated in the report that Scott was reading to me that they looked around for any wet areas, any water pooling anywhere, they couldn't find anything. When I did show my repairs and all to Scott, he said that it would, I would have to come here and talk with you guys because that's something that he could not, he could not make an adjustment on.
But there was no evidence that you nor the city, to your knowledge, saw a standing water anywhere around the house?
No, no, it's commercial property. It's the first citizens' bank down there besides Smith Radiator Service.
So what is your request tonight, sir? What, is there a amount you're asking? What is your request?
Well, my understanding was that there was like a one or two-year limit on like an adjustment. If you can have one forever, two or three years, that I just, I just don't see the evidence that I've used that water or it gone, it's gone through there. I understand that the meter, the meter shows something different. But even the power usage is not, does not show, you know, a lot of being there.
So it appears that it's about a difference from your regular monthly of about $545. Does that sound right? That would be your water service and your sewer service.
My average per month is about $65 with the exception of some of the months when I have some heat down there to, you know, to prevent any pipes bursting. You know, I have, if you look back, you can see back to 2/18 and 1/18, I do use some electricity then. But other than that, you know, it's on the average of $65 a month.
So I'm looking at the balance of four or five, which would have been back for probably that April when you used five cubic feet of water on 4/18.
Okay.
The bill is 6521.
Okay.
Take the difference basically of the water and the sewer service.
Michael can give you all the averages.
So the overage, the overage based on the 12-month average leading up to that, according to utility customer service, on the water was $252.91. The sewer was 270.16.
That was the average, that wasn't on this bill?
Right, so if you're making the next step to, if this was something where it clearly felt, fell within the policy and administratively, customer service was able to give the adjustment on water, which would be half the overage, that's 126.46. Now sewer, half of that's 135.08, but not knowing where the leak is, just knowing that there's a commode in there, if that was running, then that went down and was, you know, was treated sewage, so you got the issue, do you want to share, absorb half of that or just say, well, hey, that's, went down the drain, it was treated, but those are, together, if you did half on each, it would be 261.54.
But if it were leaking before it got to, I get confused sometimes looking at this, is that, the water's gotta go through the meter to be charged.
Yes.
So a leak in front of it, you're not gonna pick it up, but somewhere there's a leak either after the meter going into the building, which nothing was-
Correct.
The water went through the meter where it went is the question.
Right, that's what the sewer issue comes into play.
So the sewer was 270 and the water was 252. Is that right or do I have this?
Correct.
And the city policy right now, without coming to us, is what? Of those two numbers, what would the city policy be?
Well, the reason it's coming to you all is because it doesn't qualify, so-
Because it's business, not resident.
And also because, also because not knowing what the exact issue was, but let's just, if it was a commode, then it wouldn't be eligible for anything.
Right.
According to city policy, because inside, the policy says you should be aware and hear it and be able to correct it fairly quickly. But if you were, if it was something that was eligible for a water adjustment, it would be 50% of the water, which is 126.46. The sewer, if it was something again that was eligible and we found, discovered a big puddle in the front yard and there was a repair bill brought, then you make the assumption that there was a leak out front, it was repaired, it never got into the sewer, and we would have, can give an adjustment for the entire sewer amount.
But we don't know if it was a commode issue.
Don't know where it went, that's the thing. That's the reason it's before counsel, because there is no, nothing staff can do because we don't know where the water went.
I'm gonna move that we do the, I guess, the 50% on both the water and the sewer.
And I was gonna say-
Michael, tell me again what 50% on the water and sewer was. You had the numbers.
A total of 261.54.
And I was gonna say, do half the water and all the sewer. I mean, I'm game with either of it, but half the water and all the sewer then would be 396.62.
To be honest with you, that's more what I was looking at because if I had to guess what happened to it, and I've had two instances down there that I've, I've had to call the police on for vandalism of the windows and graffiti on the walls down there.
Inside?
Outside. The walls around the bank. And if I had to guess, possibly somebody turned it on, left it on, and why they would have turned it back off, I don't know, but you would think it would have taken a long time to get 10,000 cubic feet of water through there.
And it could have been that somebody else turned it off that they saw it running, saw it running, went in there and turned it off themselves. Because you're talking about an outside speaking.
Yes, sir, yes.
Are they, stupid question here, are those still working?
They are.
Have you turned them completely off?
I have not turned them off, but I can take the handles off of them.
Believe me, if they want it on, they're gonna get it.
I agree.
They're gonna get it.
All right, first of all, I had to, Mr. Dry's, was that in form of a motion or just a suggestion?
It was in form of a motion, sir.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dry to do the 50% water, 50% sewer. Do I have a second? I'll second. Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion.
Would you entertain a substitute motion or would you accept a substitute motion?
I'd be interested to hear what counsel has to say about that.
Say that again?
Isn't that what we would normally do if it's within the policy?
But we're not.
Yeah, since it's not, since it's outside of the policy, it's totally up to counsel. But yes, what you're saying, yes, staff would have the authority to do that. Staff would have the authority to do all of the sewer if it's an outside water leak.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, that's what staff has the authority to do.
But Counsel, any comments? You've got a motion, a second on the floor, we're in discussion.
I'm good with the motion.
I'm somewhat in agreement with Martha Sue, half the water, all the sewer.
We're talking about $135 more dollars.
You can make a motion to amend the motion.
I think he's wanting to hear that first before we-
Well, I'll just attach to my motion, 50% of the water, all the sewer.
He's gonna change his motion.
You're changing your motion, 50% of the water and all the sewer.
Yes.
You were the second.
I'm okay.
You're good with the second. Okay, then the total amount on that is?
390. Right, 396.52 if I'm correct.
I don't like giving anything away, but I can live with that one.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
So the sewer's 270.16 and the water would be 126.46. 396.52.
396.62?
52, 62.
Okay, they have a motion, a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. They will credit your account and you can stop by and see Scott or something at the utilities, he'll work it out.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you, I'm glad you use the police when you need to have them call. Call them anytime.
Counsel, we have no unannounced allegations. Administrator reports, your monthly departmental reports are in your agenda, does anyone have any questions? Your municipal calendar is in your agenda, does anyone have any questions?
We go back to seven, correct? Seven o'clock in September, is that correct?
September.
Okay, it shows six, I just wanted to confirm. Back to seven.
At the September meeting. Number nine, second reading on ordinance 1822, the proposed fiscal year 2018-19, City of Albemarle budget.
Before we go into that, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So later in tonight's meeting, let me see if I can find where it is. Do we not need to talk about, I mean, we may or may not need to talk about it, but I would love to hold off on the budget and talk about outside number 20, about the waste management contract and about that curbside readjustment and that kind of thing for, because, I mean, that, whatever we-
Mr. Ferris has indicated that he can handle that in the existing proposed budget.
So are we, can, then we look at number 20, is that what we're talking about now or are we still at?
In number nine, he said he can handle what he has proposed in number 20.
Okay.
But it's totally up to counsel, if you want to delay it, we can delay it.
No, 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 I'm just, because number 20 has an impact, a very, very, very small impact on the budget, but it does deal with our, it deals with our citizens. So can we look at number 20 before we go back to the budget?
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to bring number 20 forward. Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Information to number 20, curbside recycling cost adjustment. Michael has informed you there would be a slight adjustment of 66 cents, I believe it is, per resident-
Per household.
Per household for the recycling program due to some changes in recycling. We had the contract reviewed by Mr. Beaver and it is in line with the contract. Unless Counsel has some question, it is only for, on for information purposes only.
And I just want, and I guess I have the comment I just like, would like to make, that yes, it is fine print, we're talking about a big, big business here, a big industry who has customers, I know nationwide, maybe across the water, I don't know. It truly, truly bothers me that we're gonna, that we're getting nitpicked for 66 cents more, we're getting charged that much more with this program that we are offering to the citizens of Albemarle.
Well, we're very fortunate in the fact that we've got a contract. One of our neighboring cities is having to renegotiate their contract and they are looking upwards of over half a million dollars increase due to the fact that that recycling center that they were using has closed. So we're fortunate that we do have a contract that we can somewhat control the cost. Now, when that contract expires, I can't tell you what recycling's gonna be because we don't know what the recycling industry's gonna be at that time.
We did, we did a seven-year contract this time, so July 1st will be six full years remaining.
Did they indicate why they can't transport this stuff to the Mount Gill facility instead of Winston Salem?
I talked to them and they said that facility won't accept it. That's, I guess, what they're finding everywhere, that there's just not a market for it.
That is operated also by their competitor.
Well, and I asked that question too, and they said, actually, in a lot of situations, their competitors have to use their facilities, they have to use their competitors' facilities, and they said, so that's not an issue because they have to, you know, have some degree of reciprocity to be able to count on each other to be able to get some of the services done. So in this case, it's just the fact that there's no market for it.
And you're looking also, we're talking about our city, but they're looking, they're bringing all cities into one location, you know, Conapolis, Concord, all the cities up that way come into one location and then they do the transfer station.
But the, they, Mount Gill, is that the one right outside of Troy that we're talking about? That's where the county sends theirs. So if the county can send it-
But is the county with waste management, they're not, that's right.
You know, it's more than they won't accept it.
Well-
There's an economic underlying reason that's there, that's driving that.
We're only being, the, from what I'm seeing, and I think you're probably gonna see more and more as, in the local, regional media as this hits, because when this facility, Sunoco facility stops accepting, this is affecting almost everybody in this region, in the Charlotte region. So we are only being charged additional cost for hauling. That's the extra, there's not, as of yet, any sort of premium put on and being charged us for the extra-
Disposal.
Yeah. It's the, well, it's the tipping and the hauling, but there's not anything above that at this time.
Unfortunately, all recycling contracts have a clause in there for adjustment, and we may be seeing another adjustment next year, who knows?
What concerns me more than any and all of this is, is this, I see you pulled it up there, that Wall Street Journal article.
Right.
That we may have trouble recycling of any kind in the future.
Exactly, exactly.
And that really worries me, and I kept wondering, what do China and Vietnam use with our waste material? How do they deal with it over there? I thought we were, I'd hoped we were processing it here in this country. Never occurred to me we were shipping it to Asia.
Right.
And now it turns out we're shipping most of it over there. And now they, they're the ones that have put the hold on it. I'm worried about it.
I'm really worried that we'll eventually be doing nothing but taking it right back to the landfill to go.
Because actually, if you look at that article, I think they said they're going, they're transporting it, pay the $90 a ton tipping fee, that's what they figure in those costs, equates to 66 cents per household per month for us, based on what we're generating right now. But you think about this, it's $40 a ton to put anything in our landfill, so.
I'm sure don't put pizza boxes in there.
But I think for, I'm sorry, Dex, I think for the citizens, Michael, if you would, just give a brief overview of, this is not us and waste management saying it's not working, this is a whole big environment that we're dealing with. If you could just sort of give a broad brush on that.
It's pandemic.
Sure, it's actually a national issue, and as Councilmember Bram said, where the recycling goes, it becomes an international issue, but there is a change in the market for recyclables, so it's not something that's just affecting us. China and other countries in the region are no longer accepting the waste that they once did. There was some, to talk about what the cause is, I guess a lot of it has to do with what they're doing with the recyclable material, but as I understand it too, that there's a high degree of what they call contamination on recyclables that they get, that they can't actually use, which is why we actually have in June's bill stuff or some educational material for our citizens so they know what they can recycle. Talking to waste management, we feel like the reason there's a high degree of contamination, people are trying to do the right thing. So if they don't know, should it go in the trash, should it go in recycling, they think, well, I'm gonna put it in recyclables, and if it's not recyclable, then it can go in the trash. I think everyone's trying to do the right thing, but that causes-
Contamination.
Contamination at the end market, and then they've got to do something with it and it costs them. So regionally, Sunoco up in the Salisbury area is where the recyclables have been going. They are no longer accepting recyclables from waste management, so waste management is having, as part of our contract, is having to haul to a facility that they own up in the Winston Salem area. So they are passing along to us the cost of the transportation, the extra personnel, and the tipping fee for where they have to take the recyclables now, along to us. When you do the math based on our number of service points on our contract and the volume of the recyclable, that's 66 per household per month. Again, this issue is going to be affecting just about everybody in the Charlotte region unless they're doing something with the recyclables that the rest of us aren't aware of, because whether it's waste management or another company, it all winds up going down to one or two central recycling points. So everyone's having this issue, as the mayor said, I shared with him on Friday, that there's a city in the region that- a city in the region that doesn't have a contract set up quite the way ours is, and they're looking at, they're estimating half a million to nine hundred thousand dollars on this recycling issue. So, not that we want to pay extra, but we're not alone, we're not incurring or experiencing anything different than what you're gonna see throughout the region. Sixty-six cents is the actual additional cost that we're being charged, and it just comes down to, you know, do we want to continue recycling and pay the sixty-six cents, or do we want to stop that at this point? These provisions are built into contracts, we have a lot of protections, but that's one protection that anybody on the collector recycler side is going to have in their contracts because of the volatility in the recycling market. We've seen it fluctuate like this, maybe not to this degree, but we've seen it fluctuate fairly wildly and unpredictably over the years. So we haven't been in the recycling business at the curbside, but we do a lot of recycling, as you all know, through the landfill, and so we keep tabs on these things, and this is a market that has extreme ebbs and flows.
I think you just answered my question. As long as we've one year into this contract now, we got a sixty-six cent per household increase now. Going forward, if we approach with another possible increase, we do have a provision in our contract where we have the option to eliminate this recycling.
I have to go to contract and look, but I think we have that option, that, that was actually in talking to Waste Management, you know, their, their position was, you know, if we wanted to stop, that, that, that's what we could opt to do.
Okay, so, okay.
So if we want that right, I think we need to examine it a little bit more.
Not at this point, I'm not, but I'm just saying if they come back to us-
With Hugh, numbers-
You know, do we have that option?
And obviously, if we were looking merely for the dollar, it's cheaper for us to put it in our existing landfill, much cheaper, but we're trying to do the right way, right thing with the environment. Michael, if you will, mention, you talked about contamination, mention what you're doing with the bill stuffer.
Um, I don't want to, pardon me.
I'm sorry.
There's a, the June utility bill stuffer, the tri-fold that goes out to all of our utility customers, actually whether they're in the city or not, that goes out to all utility bill stuffers. We've actually, in talking to Waste Management about this issue, we also asked, well, what can we do to help? And knowing the global issue, not much Albemarle can do to have an impact, but it doesn't mean we don't want to try to do our part, because everyone does this, we, we help the overall recycling issue. There's information in the utility bill stuffer about what can be recycled and what can't. So, you know, it says always recycle plastic bottles, containers, food beverage cans, paper, glass bottles, beverage cartons, flattened cardboard, and boxes and paper, you know, do not dispose of plastic bags or film, no food waste, no foam cups and containers, no needles, et cetera. And we got this information from Waste Management, what would have been really nice is, the example of pizza box is a, is a really good one, because people think, well, it's still, it's still cardboard, it's still recyclable, but with the waste, if, if that's what they call contamination, or that, well, anything in the stream that shouldn't be there is contamination, but that's actually contamination of a product that would normally be recycled. If you ever notice, the pizza boxes have the perforated edge along the top, a lot of times you can take off, tear off the very top, because it hasn't touched anything, you can at least recycle the top part, and you can throw the bottom, it has the cheese and the grease and whatever else in the trash, so that's, that's why you have that.
I can attest to the fact that our Styrofoam cups are being taken out to twenty-four, twenty-seven and thrown on the side of the road.
Unfortunately, you're right, we have a lot of that on the side of the road.
And you know what, and I'm glad we're doing this in the June stuffer, particularly because of the issue that's so big from New York times down to here, and that people are gonna see that adjustment in their bill, but I think we need to do it occasionally. We need to do those reminders occasionally, and thanks to Shannon, and thanks to the radio station for being out there, that we just do those, it is the right thing to recycle, but we need to make sure we're recycling the right things.
Comment.
So, right now, because of, because of the, the point at which this has all come up, we plan to, just through other cost savings and hopefully with some prudent budgeting of underestimating revenues, overestimating costs in proposed budget that equates to a conservative budget, what we plan to do is not pass any, along any of this increase on the fee on the utility bills this year, and just try to absorb the cost. Now, we'll see what happens next year, but at this late point-
Good.
It is a lot of money, it's not as much as what we're talking about other towns looking at, we're talking maybe in the forty thousand dollar range, forty to fifty thousand dollar range, but we're going to try to make some adjustments and, and find some, you know, with the conservative budgeting and other things, to absorb that cost this year.
Seven dollars and ninety-two cents a household a year.
Michael, for the listening audience, I know we said sixty-six cents per household, tell them how approximately, how many residential households is involved with this contract?
Um, I think it's six thousand sixty-two, I think it's six thousand two hundred and thirty-eight.
Okay.
That's a good round.
When you negotiate the contract, you deal with that number pretty religiously, and so.
Good to-
That's right.
So we're gonna absorb it for the next twelve months in our budget, and I think the paper and the radio needs to let the folks know that we're going to do that for them.
Yeah.
Okay, moving back to number nine.
Thank you.
Second reading ordinance eighteen twenty-two, proposed fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen, City of Albemarle budget.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Under new business number ten, consider a utility relocation agreement with NC DOT for the electrical distribution system to support the NC twenty-four, twenty-seven widening project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. Mr. Ferris, I think you should state what the good news of this part is.
The, yeah, the real good news is, it doesn't look like we're gonna have any out-of-pocket expense that's not going to be reimbursed. There is still state provision that cities in the electric business have to pay a hundred percent of utility electric relocation cost when there's a widening project. That is, if you are in the DOT right of way, all of our facilities are currently located outside of the state right of way. That has not always been the case, and we've probably paid two, three million dollars in utility relocation fees over the years. And actually, when we do ultimately get to the water side, the good news is there, we have some property fee simple, we still will have some costs for sure, but the state law has changed in the last couple of years, that we formerly had to pay a hundred percent, and I believe for cities our size now, we only pay twenty-five percent. So we will have costs there, but it is a lot less than it used to be, and, you know, it, it's all, whether the city pays or the DOT pays it, it's all taxpayer money. However, their policy had been that cities over fifty-five hundred population had paid a one hundred percent of those costs, but that meant any water sewer authority, county system, or private water system, or electric utility didn't have to pay anything, so it was really only cities of a certain size. So the fact that we only have to pay twenty-five percent is getting a lot better to, the fairness issue is, is coming into play and becoming a lot more reasonable.
Good question. We'll go ahead and have our vendors do the work, right? Our contractors?
Right.
Then we notify the state, send them the invoices, whatever-
We submit payment requests.
They'll reimburse us, and we pay the, we pay the vendors?
We, we pay the vendors upfront, because they need to be paid, you know, right away for the work.
That was my question, how much are we gonna have, are we gonna have any cash flow?
No, I asked Public Utilities Director Mike Leonis, and he said the contract states that we will submit requests monthly.
So it's-
So there's, there's no, let's say it's a, I don't remember what it is, a four million dollar project, we're not fronting four million dollars and getting it reimbursed, we're getting it reimbursed really as we go. So we submit payment requests, now that doesn't mean they don't ask for additional information or something that looks right to them, but, you know, there's a-
Shouldn't have more than a month or two.
That's correct, that's correct.
And the change in the law, guys, I mean, I think it's been since this group's been up here, but it, it came about because of a lot of lobbying from the league, a lot of lobbying from the league, because the counties were getting it free.
That's right.
Yeah.
And, and the city, the City of Albemarle, as far as I know, through the league pushed this more than-
Exactly.
Than any entity.
Particularly in our county.
Councilmember Jack Neal, this was really legislative goal number one for him over the years.
It sure was, for many years.
Further questions? Before we move on?
We need to vote.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we need a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, resolution to adjust the letter rate structure and schedules to provide for a four percent rate decrease.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve, consider resolution to provide for a cost of living adjustment.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen, consider a resolution approving twenty eighteen changes to the planning and development services fee schedule. If you have questions, Mr. Robinson is here.
But we have seen these in our discussion, move approval.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number fourteen, ordinance eighteen twenty-six to amend the fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen section eight budget. You'll see, we were able to do a few more vouchers this year, which we're always looking to do more, but this is the first time we've had that ability, so.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carrying. Number fifteen, update on upcoming twenty eighteen board appointments is for you, for information, for you can start your discussion and looking for how we want to proceed with these replacements. You'll see in here that Mr. Robinson has made a suggestion of possibly combining some boards, and maybe we need to look at that, we just need to decide on a number. Mr. Robinson.
I like that a lot.
The four-fifths majority rule that was changed on conditional use doesn't apply to just plant, just the board of adjustment, normal decisions, correct?
Uh, four-fifths, to my knowledge, that applies to variances.
And it, that didn't change when the legislature changed it for just conditional use. They, they made a change about a year ago, so you, they no longer require the supermajority for conditional use in some, some aspects, as we had on West Main Street. They did not change regular board of, of, board of adjustment, correct?
Uh, for variances, that's correct, yeah. If you have an appeal come before board of adjustment, that would still be a regular majority.
Okay.
I like that, combining planning board and board of adjustment.
I, I do too, we need to look at-
I like that, I like that.
There's, there's a lot of advantages, we've looked at smaller towns even, and, and even some bigger towns too that have done it, it's just, it's, it's hard to get good, qualified people in there, coach them up and everything, and then, you know, something comes up and they come off, and, you know, a city this size, it's, it's, it's good to, it's, it's good to make it as small as you can, and at the same time, these, if, if we had them combined, that one board we would be meeting more consistently, and that's also very helpful.
But if we have eleven on their side-
Mm-hmm.
And only seven of there, you only have to have the four-fifths of the seven present.
No, you have to have four-fifths of the entire sitting board, but that doesn't include your, that does not include your alternates, so if you had, say, eleven and you had two of them as alternates, then you would really only need to have the four-fifths of the nine that would be there. So if you had only seven people and then you had your two alternates on, you'd have a hundred percent then.
Okay.
It's my only concern with combining the two boards, if we're pretty much fully staffed on both now and have other people interested in this.
We have one, one opening, though, we have.
It seems to be a lot of interest on those two boards. If we have to lose people that are willing to volunteer, um, so, you know.
Yeah, I, again, I mean, I'd have to look and see what kind of applicants we've got. I don't, I don't see a whole lot of interest, but you guys may, may see-
But we don't have anybody that has to come off this term, correct?
Nobody has to come off, right.
So technically, everybody that's on there is available, eligible again, and typically they do stay on there till they have to come off.
We have a few, we have a few that, we have a few that I think that are, that, that are not gonna want to be reappointed, and I think we did try to indicate that, but, um-
I know it's certainly more-
I don't know what's going on with this, it won't print off right.
Mine does the same thing.
Yeah, they're all having some problems.
And we're still waiting to hear back from a couple, but technically, everyone is available for appointment, reappointment.
Just as a question, I know we're, this is for us to look at, for us to maybe to take action on next month, because everybody is seated until the replacement is appointed.
Mm-hmm.
I hate to ask this, but you particularly have been so diligent in having these second Tuesday meetings, okay? Educational meetings.
That's right.
I would love to see, and I hate to throw this to you, but I would love to see the number of people that we're talking about here, who have taken their time outside of their meetings to come to those training events, because of the ones that I've attended, I have seen some of the same people who have come month after month to be there, and I think that shows they are doing their due diligence and taking their responsibility very seriously when they're able to do that. Now granted, I know the ones I've missed, I've gone back online and played-
Yeah.
Okay, I know you can do that.
Yeah.
But being there, being present is so important, so if you can get that to us, I would like to have that to compare, is in the process of all of this.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks, I just think that adds a level of responsibility on my part.
Okay.
And by the way, there's one tomorrow night.
I know there is, I've changed them around so I could be there, because it's a very important one.
All right.
You see, what are you looking for?
I was looking at the one, I think, of, well, I'll talk, I'll talk to him privately, I think there's at least one error in there, but I'll talk to him privately.
Of a term?
Yes.
I think so too.
Yeah. Okay, counsel, have any other questions, that, we'll move forward.
So we're gonna talk about that next month.
We need to talk about that and be prepared, but we don't have to do it necessarily next month, because they continue to serve-
Right.
-until we replace them, but we need to make some decisions on whether we're gonna combine the boards or how we're gonna do it. One of the things we typically have, we, and Ms. Hall just brought it, how many times they showed up for the meetings, their attendance?
Their attendance to their meetings, but also their attendance to those special trainings, because Kevin has, Kevin has really gone overboard to make sure we had those.
Kevin, if you'll work that up for us, we'll get it, thank you. Number sixteen, consider approval of special event permit for the Forest Hills Independence Day Parade.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Whitely, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number seventeen, consider approval of the special event permit application, Alamo Parks and Recreation Tour to Elvis and the, and the cycle tour. You've had a little handout tonight showing you the streets that would be closed, just for clarification purposes. Pretty much the same as the past, except they've changed the routes a little bit.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number eighteen, consider submission of advocacy goals to the league municipalities. I encourage you to think about that, we have to get that in, and, uh, we, we probably need to make our decisions by the July meeting, and we all know one that we're talking about was the, might help for roads, but we need to see if there's anything else we want to put into.
And, and just, it's broad, anything you think, not just specifically for us, but, specifically for us, but that, that then other cities and towns might like and vote with us, because it might be very important to us, but if we can't defend it, and I hate to use that word, but if we can't defend it and put enough gusto behind it, then the gov, then the governmental and the LAX, the legislative action committees won't accept it, they won't push it on through, isn't that right? I mean, you've been on that, I don't know if the mayor, but those of you that have been on that process realize it might be important to us, but for us to move it forward, it needs to be presented in a way that's important to other cities and towns.
I'm still on the, I moved from the tax and finance to now the general government committee.
And to that end, we all should go ahead and put down, if you have not put it on your calendar, I had not seen that date yet, of the Golskavaski advocacy meeting on the twenty-eighth of November. I don't know that I've seen that date before until just right now. I don't know that I've seen that date before until just right now. And that's usually, um...
Is that the league?
Yeah. No, it's not part of the league meeting. It doesn't look like it.
It's usually a separate meeting.
It was part of the, right bef, it was the start of league meeting last time. They tried, or two years ago, because of the venue process, and I guess they've gone back to a separate day, so it's November 28th at the Raleigh Convention Center, which I think is the first year they did it, first two years they did it that way.
Yeah, right. It's a Wednesday.
Is that the Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
No, it's the Wednesday after Thanksgiving.
Number 19, information report on the sales of surplus property. That information's in your agenda. Anyone has any questions?
They did good.
Hearing none, we'll move on. Number 21, information, public input session on STIP 10-year improvement plan. I will be out of town next Tuesday from 5:00 to 7:00. We need a couple people that wouldn't mind going by and making some comments and promoting our corporate center road, especially in the couple of things that they're doing, if anybody can get by there.
I'll be by there.
It's from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Commissioner's Meeting Room.
And that's the only big thing that we need to push, right?
Chris, you're on the RPO, are you at, you in town?
Yeah, we're going, we're meeting this week, and I saw the STIP list come out a while ago, and, or it came out a couple days ago. That was on the bottom.
And I understand, but we need to push it, because the Bill North County out of Bonds Act that they're trying to pass, if that passes, that's going to be full rule, I understand. So we need to keep that in the forefront.
You know, I was going to talk with Dana and see what we can do, if anything, because there's some, some really big expensive projects in our district ahead of that. The, also one I was glad to see on there, but it got no points either, was the Pfeiffer, the Meisenheimer bypass thing. It's next to last. I mean, those were the bottom two with all those, no points.
I actually, I actually spoke to Dana again last week, or emailed back and forth about, you know, I saw it was last, and of course, I know it's more local project, but I...
I mean, throw, you know, throwing our points on that won't do any good, if we don't get division support.
But, and so I mentioned, I asked if there's any other information they, they need, and of course, they have a real specific focus on what gets points or what qualifies for points. So I think there's things that maybe aren't in the equation that we feel like this will improve, you know, they're going to do a big project out of 2427 to improve with bi-directional meeting, medians to improve safety. Well, this will take traffic off of that. It's a east-west regional connector. It'll take traffic off that, because local traffic won't have to get out on the road to get from one shopping center to another. We've, I, I mentioned, just made sure she was aware that, I can't speak for council, I told her, if they could build the road, we'll provide the right of way. There won't be any costs there. She asked if we'd be willing to partner in some of the cost of construction. I said, I, I don't know, I'd have to bounce it off council, but just whatever makes the project go, or makes the project happen.
As far as cost, as far as cost, that was one of the smaller cost projects of the 18 that were on there. There were some of them, there were like 1.1 million, a couple of them, but a lot of them were 30, 40, 50, 60, 80 million dollars. So I mean, this was one of the smaller cost ones, at 6.7, I think it was. So I was thinking that might help it move up some of the list, but...
And what I've heard all along, just as Michael said, we needed an exit out the back behind the Walmart and Olive Place Shopping Center. Well, this, if that road's in, then we can make a connecting road to that, and we can do all that. That could be the same one project, if they were willing to support it.
Yeah.
That's all I've heard, that we needed to do, and that we would get support, but I haven't seen any support come through.
Yeah, we, we can, we can submit 18 projects in this RPO, and that's the one that has zero points. I mean, even the Pfeiffer, the Meisenheimer bypass had some, a few points, I think, from the division maybe, but this, this was, so I don't know if there's any way to...
We just, we got to keep it for them, yeah.
So the big thing is that, is the corporate part, the road there. Is anybody else going to be able to be there? Are you in town?
I think I can come.
Okay.
When is it next?
Next Tuesday, 5:00 to 7:00 at the Commons.
I think I'll get on time.
Number 22, is the information also, the ABC has made an after-profit distribution to the city, I believe it was $50,000, Mr. Ferris, is that correct?
There was a letter.
Yeah, I didn't see it attached.
It was listed attached letter, I didn't have an attached letter.
I'm, I'm sorry, that was, that was, that was my doing then, but it's, it's $50,000. That's above and beyond the $20,000 per month that they give us.
Nice.
And some, somewhere, what, so, was it not here originally that I saw their other information that I questioned about?
It wasn't here. I emailed the budget.
It was another email.
And I've asked Ms. Cranford for that information.
Okay, another, that's right, it was a separate email of their budget for next year.
They're actually having a public hearing this week, I think.
It, I thought it was next week. I thought it was really late.
That's in our community, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's really late, the process.
Okay. Before we get into roundtable, I need to entertain a motion that when we move into closed session for the personnel section, that we appoint Ms. Hughes as acting clerk for the personnel section in the balance of the meetings.
I moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Coming around, Mr. Ferris.
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend. Ms. Hughes.
No comments.
Mr. Aldrich.
Oh, do you add this for the adjustment?
Correctly. I'm glad you mentioned that. We did add that. We also have on your side of you tonight a special event permit for a benefit for the Butterfly House, the Dancing with the Stars on Cardinal Drive. They're asking to close the road.
It's actually colonial, it's colonial drive.
Colonial.
It's going to be on colonial between Melkor and North Ridge.
Okay.
It's going to be on Friday, July the 27th, from 7:00 to 10:00. It's one of the, one of the fundraisers for the Butterfly, Butterfly House. They do not currently have their ABC permit and all that in check yet, but he could not be, Matt Shaver could not be here tonight and wanted me to bring it to the council's attention.
Council can approve it contingent on they providing staff, all the other required permits.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Aldrich?
Um, nope.
Ms. Hall?
I'm sorry, guys, but I do have a list, but that's okay. That's what we're here for. It's not about how fast we can get out, my golly. It's about what's going on. Ross, what's an update on the status of Stony Gap? Do you know?
Are you talking about road, or are you talking about...
Road. I'm talking about the, the Lee, or whoever the company is, that's still doing all their stuff.
All right, wait a minute. Are you talking about the bridge, or are you talking about Leachade?
The Leachade.
Leachade.
Can anybody tell me about that? I still got people saying, when's that going to be done?
They're still working.
Yeah, that's not what I want to hear. Do we have anything more than that?
I'm not prepared to answer a question, but, sorry.
The last I, I saw, I talked with Darren.
It was, there's a, in the...
Department.
Yeah.
Right.
That's, that's the only update I've got, sorry.
That's the most recent that he knows what's in the department room. Okay.
Unfortunately, we're, they haven't even got back inside the landfill to start that part there, still winding down the outside.
I know something about the pumps last week. I know that.
And I know that, we know that, but what I guess the reason I ask that question is that we have people in the community that keep saying, what's the status of this? When's that ever going to be done? We're up and down 52 right there, and there's still so much construction all the time. Park Ridge and I sent a message to, to Kevin, one of the houses that we've been looking at, some of you may get regular communication as to Bill Aldrich and I about, is it 110?
110.
The house where the roof on the porch fell through with the storm. I saw some folks sitting on that porch this weekend. So as soon as I saw that, I said, Kevin, there's somebody there. So, yeah, it was really crazy. On the telephone, sitting on the porch.
They're brave.